All right, with it now being six o'clock, I will officially call the meeting to order. And we have one item on our agenda tonight, and that is the legislative update. And we'll be covering state legislative regional and federal issues. And we have Doug Levy here with us tonight to present. Take it away, Doug.
Thanks very much, Councilmember McCorvin and councilmembers. Glad to be in front of you. And I want to thank both Christie Rowland and Judith Subia, who were rescuing me here. My I had PowerPoint problems on my end, so they're going to be the screen sharers. And I will go over this with you. Before we start, let me just point out that you should have received both. The PowerPoint will go over tonight as well as a longer copy of the state legislative, regional and federal priorities. And we'll work off of this tonight. But anything you need more detail in, you'll be able to see that in the longer version. So with that, next slide, please. So this session and the prior few, what we've done is to put all this in one place, we've laid out not only our priorities at the at the state level, but also regionally and at the federal level. So we do so again for the 22 session and regionally and federally. So as a frame for the 2022 session, remember that it is a short 60 day session of the legislature where the operating and capital and transportation budgets are supplemental. They're more for fine tuning and not meant to be fully reopened. What we know is that we're probably trending toward a mix of members being in person to stomach some extent and virtual for things like hearings. And then probably all virtual for outside stakeholders and the public as we saw with 2021. And while we won't get into it much tonight, just a flag for you that after the redistricting that went with the census, the 49 state legislative districts will be redrawn. We're waiting to see what that looks like, but we're pretty sure that Renton will be in fewer legislative districts. That was one of the things we asked in our written communication with the redistricting members. Next slide, please. So the big issues that we're keeping in mind, and this is covering all three levels. But at the state level, there is still some negotiation going on and at least the possibility being held open for a pre 2022 special session on transportation revenue. We will see if that comes to pass. The state's operating budget is quite stable right now. We would never have said that a couple of years ago. But coming out of the pandemic and with federal assistance, and now with the economy recovering, the state's latest forecast showed nearly a billion dollars ahead of projected revenue for the remainder of this 2123 biennium and nearly a billion dollars more forecasted for 202325. Some of the legislature's decisions from 2021 are pending legal challenges. One of those being the capital gains tax. So we will see what happens there. You know, you just some of you heard in your planning and development committee, the housing and homelessness challenges remain acute for us. And we think one of the major topics in 2022 will be that at least a few of the policing reform bills that were passed by the legislature probably are going to undergo some sort of technical change. Regionally, one of the big things and Councilmember McCorvin is directly involved in this one. King County Metro is doing a major update to its service guidelines and a long range plan it calls Metro Connects. So that will really affect the future of transit service around the county. We're obviously tracking closely this whole health through housing proposal that's coming from the county. For us, that's going to involve a new supportive housing facility and the relocation of the de-intensification shelter that has been in Renton for quite a while now. And then we'll go into more detail. But with the countywide parks levy passed a couple of years ago, some of the grant programs are being rolled out. We are applying for two of them. We'll cover that with you. Federally, I think you all are aware that an infrastructure package and what's known as the reconciliation bill have been, still are pending. And the the folks in Congress went through a two month kick the can exercise on their raising up the debt ceiling. They didn't agree to do it. They didn't agree not to do it. They simply extended that whole episode for two more months until the beginning of December. So we'll see what happens there. Next slide, please. So starting with our state priorities, I mentioned to you that the capital budget won't be a full scale, full bore, two year capital budget. But to the extent that there are things that are time sensitive or emergent, the legislature may still do a little bit on the capital budget side. And that's one of the things we propose to you. We have a timely project on, and that is at 405 and 44th, where there are some discussions around a park and ride facility just east of the freeway and connections with the May Creek Trail. We think there's a really good opportunity here to capture a time window where the Renton Bellevue construction is underway. And we either can or can't work with DOT on getting everything ready for a boardwalk that could connect a park and ride on one side of the freeway with the May Creek Trail and with the Seahawk Station that'll open up for bus rapid transit in 2026. So we we have a $250,000 request for the capital budget on that front. Transportation infrastructure, this is going to look very familiar to you. But we are again asking for a package. We are again asking for funding for our key projects. And as a reminder, that is the 405 Northeast Direct Access Project that we've been waiting on a long time. What we call our 405 167 area over crossing of Rainier Avenue at Grady to save the BRT buses about two minutes each direction. And then our third one is extension of the East Rail Corridor down to Coolon. And I think you all heard Council President Orman talk about all the efforts going on with East Rail. So those have been in some of the lists we've seen. We'll find out if a special session happens. Fiscal matters, this has been one that we have carried. We haven't seen a lot of willingness by the legislature to date, but we continue to want to prioritize on the fact that the the 1% property tax limit that local governments and local property taxing taxing districts are dealing with is really a flawed system. You have your costs going up by inflation and your revenues capped at 1%. And we we probably wouldn't have too many businesses wanting to operate that way. And that's the system we got. And and it's it's one of the things that's obviously led to your discussions with finance on things like the VNO. Public safety, I mentioned policing reform bills. A lot of them passed last session. We were supportive of many, many of them. There are a couple around definitions of use of force and whether stops can be done under reasonable suspicions or probable cause. Police tactics bills. We think we're going to see in the House in particular about three to four technical fixed bills. So we'll keep a close eye on that. Then the basic law enforcement academy has been one we've really wanted to bird dog funding for and slots for. As the economy recovers, as agencies like ours try and bring more officers online, there is going to be a glut with the what we call the BLIA Academy slots. And the Criminal Justice Training Commission is asking for money for about four new ones in this next budget. So we want to be very supportive of that. And then, as you saw last session, something that the mayor had first directed, we carry, and this will be across all of our state, regional and federal. We want to look for opportunities on the racial justice and equity fronts, grant funding and other tools to address disparities. Obviously enable more affordable housing and and basic human needs, stabilizing folks' situations and enhancing access for those communities that have been either unserved or underserved historically. Next slide, please. So those are the ones we we call our priority issues or our top priority issues. We will spend the most time on. As you well know, with a couple of thousand bills coming out every legislative session, there are going to be lots of other issues. And so we always reserve a section of the agenda. We sort of call the Support, Oppose and Track Monitor. I've highlighted some of the things that are in that listing. Again, I would call your attention to the other agenda document that has all of them listed. And I can take questions on any of them you may have. But just to highlight a few, the legislature made a rather big decision in 2021 around drug offenses in response to a state Supreme Court case called the Blake Decision. We think no matter how that all unfurls, there's going to be significant needs on the funding side for courts in particular and for mental health. And so we want to be supportive of those needs. To our south, the city of Des Moines is working with legislators to bring forward a bill to better crack down on rising catalytic converter thefts. That's a new trend that police departments are seeing. I've seen our data. We certainly are seeing an uptick. So we want to be supportive of that. A heads up that there will be a very robust discussion in the coming legislative session on what I would call missing middle and how much the legislature may want to mandate communities to accommodate zoning of duplex, triplex, fourplex and the like throughout all zones, including single family zones. As a practical matter, as you well know, staff and CED is already headed the direction of trying to bring a lot more density into some of these areas. Question is whether we want to have the legislature mandate that from Olympia. So that'll be a big debate in 2022. Again, as we've seen for a few years now, there will also be a debate around accessory dwelling units and how far the legislature should go in directing specific standards and types and structures. House Bill 1220, we spent an inordinate amount of time on in the 2021 session. At the end of that session, when the legislature passed that bill, it was requiring jurisdictions to do more work for future planning of emergency housing, permanent supportive housing and emergency shelters. And the legislature under state law is required to provide new money to local governments to carry out that planning work. It did not. So the Association of Washington Cities and others will be making a hard push to see that funding come through, and we'd like to be supportive of that. This next one is a is more of a regulatory item that our city clerk and assistant city clerk brought forward. And that's this whole burgeoning problem and challenge around email records retention. We're in an era now where we spend so much more time communicating electronically. And you add to that things like Zoom meetings and chat boxes that go with Zoom meetings. There will be more email records required than ever before. While there is about a two year schedule for email records that go with mayors, for the rest of local government, there isn't that kind of a compact retention schedule. And, you know, we're at several terabytes of information we're carrying around electronically. And so our clerk's office thinks it would be really useful for a number of jurisdictions in King County, perhaps to band together and talk to the state archives about whether there can be a more rational system. And then transportation benefit districts. Renton does not have a transportation benefit district. As you well know, you're allowed to establish them under state law. It's a little bulky in statute right now. There's a 10 year period where they can be established. Then there's renewal requirements. Some jurisdictions, including the city of Walla Walla, are going to try and make that a little more user friendly and either have fewer renewal requirements or perhaps more of a permanent authorization in statute. We want to be prepared to support that in case the Renton City Council down the line does turn its attention toward establishing a TBD. Next slide, please. Now segueing over to the regional front, and many of these are going to look familiar to you. I talked about King County Metro. And within the next month or two, the King County Council and the Regional Transit Committee, on which Councilmember McCorvin sits, will be casting some really important votes about the metro service guidelines and Metro Connects. I should say that we feel pretty good right now about where Metro is heading with these guidelines and Metro Connects. For one thing, they're putting a much stronger lens on equity and looking at areas where there are disproportionate needs and reliance on transit service. So that helps with South King County, where we do have a lot of populations that fit that profile. Sound Transit, as you well know, there are several things underway. What happens at 405 and 44th with park and ride location? Integrating light rail transit into the what we call the South Renton Transit Center at Rainier and Grady. Actively studying light rail transit for the next ST ballot to come. And as I shared with you on our transportation side, we want to have support from Sound Transit on these efforts to improve the 405 167 area and save travel time for the BRTs. PSRC is a standing item where we just remind ourselves we want to be very aggressive in pursuing funds, especially on the transportation front. I've talked about East Rail. That's a pretty amazing collaboration with King County, numerous cities and private partners to build out what would become a 42 mile trail from Renton to Renton through Woodinville and into Snohomish County along the old BNSF Trail Corridor. Red Lion Shelter, obviously, as you well know, we are working with county to usher in a new shelter at the former extended stay site and relocate the 235 plus residents who have been at the Red Lion since March, April of 2020. The Sunset Area, we just had a wonderful event on Friday with the new Sunset Oaks development up there across from the library. So we want to obviously continue to partner with the Renton Housing Authority, Skip, who you heard from in one of your committees tonight, Microsoft and other community partners that are putting their elbows to the wheel on affordable housing. And then, as we talked about homeless shelters and feeding program, we have desires to relocate some of what we're doing now, potentially looking at a remodel and upgrade of the old chamber building and overall work with nonprofits like Reach and others. Next slide, please. Just some more on the regional side. We anticipate going to construction next year on Family First Community Center. We've been very successful with outside funding. I agree with Councilmember Benedetti's clause. There should be a great, a great thing. We're still not all the way there on the fundraising side. So we want to look for a couple of other opportunities. The King County Flood Control Zone District, we've been very aggressive in seeking out funding for Renton priorities and want to continue to do that. I talked about the Regional Homelessness Authority and Mental Health Services. Again, more and more needs are growing out there. And we want to make sure we're adept to that and looking at funding sources. Racial justice and equity, as I mentioned. For Culture is the is the county's funding source for arts and culture. And, you know, we want to try and be thoughtful and intentional about looking at opportunities there. And then I would say Councilmember O'Halloran has been extremely involved in this next issue around the Cedar Hills Regional Landfill and where the next facilities, support and operations center is going to go. This year has been good in that we're getting a lot of signals. It's not going to go into that Renton Highlands location. But until we see something official and final, final, we want to have that vigilance on the on the list here. Then we're part of some countywide conversations among King County and various cities on where and how and under what rules the county may wish to deploy more use of reclaimed water. As they try and do that, and if it's in areas that are already served by potable water, you know, there's, there's issues about protecting fiduciary interests and making sure the municipal water utilities are reimbursed. So lots of conversations going on there. Then one we added last session at council's request, and that is to be, you know, very deliberate in working with Puget Sound Energy on green power opportunities, both for our residents and the community at large, as well as for our local government and others. Next slide, please. And then finally, ticking off some of the the federal items. So the first one we listed here on COVID-19 relief side is the American Rescue Plan Act. And as you well know, Renton qualified for 18.1 million in direct money. And Carrie Roller has presented some of the early guts of a spending plan to you, and there will be more to come. There is one thing I wanted to just flag. I think we started to get into it at one of the committee of the whole meetings. And that is the ARPA funding is a is a different animal in some important respects than CARES funding that came ahead of it. CARES, you may remember, there was no direct money provided to local governments. And the state of Washington, in our case, did end up sharing some of its state money with locals. And the CARES Act was very driven to COVID impacts and addressing COVID impacts and spending money only on things that represented a direct impact from COVID-19. The ARPA money is different in that it very consciously through Congress's acts involved direct funding to help local governments deal with revenue losses and revenue shortfalls. So I only bring that up because as you look at the remainder of the spending plan, I think, you know, there's still a lot of issues on the table and how how you do that is ultimately going to be your call. But there was a recognition in ARPA that cities and counties needed to deal with some of these internal shortfalls along with the external impacts. As I mentioned, there's a an infrastructure package of about $1.2 trillion and $550 billion in new funding that is on the table in Congress awaiting a final vote from the US House. There's a lot of interplay with that and the reconciliation bill, as I think most of you know. Racial justice and equity, again, we carry that on the federal side and want to look for opportunities there. Renton Airport, we we list here on our federal side for a couple of key reasons. We know we have a control tower that is in need of serious seismic upgrades. And then we have all of the infrastructure with the runways that needs upgrades. So we have both FEMA and FAA grants that we're going to hope to be securing in the near future. Sunset Area Transformation, there's obviously some federal parts of money we want to keep our eye on. Hot off the press with the Sunset Area is that if we see appropriations bills go forward by the end of the year in Congress, they're supposed to do 13 of them a year unless they do what's called the continuing resolution. But in the one for transportation and housing and urban development, Senator Patty Murray is carrying 2.5 million for the Sunset Gardens project. That would be in addition to the million and a half that you all are putting in through your 1590 funds. And, you know, knock on wood, and hopefully in addition to money that RHA hopes to obtain from both the Housing Trust Fund at the state level and King County's housing finance programs at county level. Family first, to the extent we find out about any federal dollars, we have learned of some that are for operations once it's up and running. But if we hear of anything that can help with that last couple of hurdles on construction side, we'll keep our eye out. We have a catchall for all of the various grant funding across many categories that we look to pursue. And then one that has come from our finance folks, making sure that we support our members in Congress and keeping an eye on things like municipal tax exempt bonds and and having them retain that important tax exempt status. So that is several mouthfuls, but I would like to pause there. And that's our draft. We would bring to you a final version of this after the election, either November 8th or 15th. And and then, as you know, then we'll start to segue into meeting with all of our legislators and putting more of our sort of one pager material together. But with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Doug. Several mouthfuls indeed, quite a lot to digest on all those levels. And I saw Councilmember Perez raise her hand earlier on, I think it was slide five, when you're talking about TBD. So I'm going to hazard a guess that might be her question. So I'll go and call on her now and then Councilmember O'Halloran next.
Wow, Councilmember McCorvin, you totally know me. Yes, that was one of my questions, Dave. But first, thank you very much, Doug. This is, this was great. It was a great presentation, unelining all the needs of the city right now. I was, I didn't understand quite clear. If you say that the session in Olympia is going to be virtual or presidential, but they're not going to have people around or they don't know yet.
It's a great question, Councilmember Perez. They haven't made final decisions. I think in conversations with a number of them, what we are, the strong signal we are getting is that those of us external to the legislature are probably going to participate a lot like we all are right now through Zoom and Teams and the like. Those of us in the legislature, they may do more of a hybrid. But we believe that for stakeholders and non legislative staff, it's going to be largely virtual in 2022 unless something really changes with the COVID numbers in the next month or two.
Thank you, thank you, Doug. And yeah, my second question is what about the DVD? We do not have it in Renton, but one of the priorities that we set up the beginning of the year in our retreat was to expect to bring a proposal for TBD in Renton. I'm not in Transportation Committee this year, so I don't know if there would have been conversation about that or not. But if they have not, probably are we waiting to see the improvements on this before we move ahead in Renton? Or do you have any idea about this?
I think that's really your your policy call as a council. We're certainly, I can work with Public Works and bring to all of you the background on how the TBD statute is constructed right now and what funding tools that local governments have in creating TBDs. If the legislature goes ahead and makes this a little more streamlined to use, we'll obviously bring that information to you. And you're right, knowing that it's something that council has pondered, we thought it would make sense for us to support things to make the tool a bit easier to use.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, great question. I was wondering something very similar as far as the cities who had existing TBDs and how those would get rolled in. So certainly something I would I would be interested in knowing as well. Councilmember O'Halloran, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Doug. I have a question on the regional priorities. Sound Transit, I don't want us to lose sight of our parking lot at South Renton.
Yeah, so far, Councilmember O'Halloran, the the good news so far is that as some of these delays in parking have been talked about, Sound Transit has continued to go forward with a 30% design of the 700 stall lot at South Renton at Grady and Rainier. And I think this is something that Councilmember and Sound Transit Board Member Prince brought up. We've really tried to, how shall I say, push back a little bit on the Sound Transit staff, which has been, I think, saying, hey, all of our parking is delayed until 2034. And that's the way that we read the realignment resolution passed by the board is that the first order of business was to try and find a way through revenue and cost savings and efficiencies to get to the voter approved ST3 ballot from 2016. And if and if that failed, then some of the defaults to delays in the schedule would come about. So yes, we're continuing to push with South Renton Transit Center. And that's also why we're presenting to Sound Transit some creative ideas with 405 and 44th as well.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, do we have any additional questions for Doug or feedback on what's been presented? Or still chewing several mouthfuls? All right, well, I had a question. Oh, actually, go ahead, Councilmember Benedetti, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to encourage that when this is finally something that people can listen to, I want to encourage people to take a look at the excellent, the excellent document that accompanies this because Doug, you did a great job hitting the highlights. There's a lot more here. And there's a, there's a lot of things that I think are really topical to some of the things that we're talking about in in council right now. So thank you for that.
Okay, thanks. So oh, more questions, keep going, go for it. Councilmember O'Halloran. Councilmember O'Halloran. You are on mute still.
Thank you. So in the detailed document, and again, yes, I I really appreciate this high level bullet point summarization. One of the things that was in our previous legislative priorities that I didn't see in this draft was the potential. The potential viability of possibly foot. Foot passenger only ferries out of Southport. Is that?
Yes, so it's a it's a good it's a good catch, Councilmember O'Halloran. In leading into the twenty twenty one session, we knew that. The Puget Sound Regional Council, which had been directed to study. Passenger ferry possibilities beyond what we have now. Had listed the Southport. Stop as as one distinct possibility, and they were going to then hand that to the legislature. At this point, because we're not aware of the legislature taking any action on that. Anytime soon, at least until they get some recovered revenues. We don't have it on the agenda. I don't think we've forgotten it. We just don't sense a. Twenty two action item. Ironically, the action item that the legislature will probably do around ferries is trying to. Keep them solvent. There's been, as you've probably seen in the headline, a lot of. Of the the ferry rides canceled, staffing shortages, so. That's probably going to be a major item for those legislators that are in what we call the ferry districts is how to keep that system solvent.
Thank you.
Of course.
Okay, and along the same lines, Doug, I had a question on the capital side of things. Of a an item that I know we've had before, and it's always a timing issue largely, I think, due to Boeing and some other components. Sam Chastain Trail. I my guess is it's just in a in a short session. It's not something we could obviously probably fit into that that. Request for a sixty day session, but is that anything we would want to be teeing up for? Or is there any initial like? Design funding that we would be going after, or what do we have to do to set the stage? Because I know that's been a priority of some of our legislators to get that completed. That aside, I want to say I totally stand behind the the May Creek connection as well, too, as is another. Equally important priority, and for that matter, the East Rail. Component. So lots of stuff happening on the trails. I don't mean that there are too many items in there, but I'm just curious some thoughts on that.
Yeah, I think I think the city is still bullish on a on a future Sam Chastain Trail. Just got some of the last easements needed from Boeing. One of the big hurdles now, timing wise, is that's a project that I believe needs about seven different. Permit approvals from the state and federal governments, not to mention a tribal consultation role. So we've asked that question several times of the community service parks, folks. I think. You're right, we have legislators that continue to ask us when maybe that one could be brought forward. Certainly don't think it's come off the table. It's just a question of when we think we can get through. Early design and at least enough of the permitting to credibly ask for construction funding. So we doubt it's twenty twenty two. Whether we can get there for twenty three, twenty five, we'll we'll see.
Great, thank you. And then I did have another trail related question. I'll make all my questions on trails. But on East Rail, obviously, we would be most concerned with our portion of the trail. Are you aware of any efforts? Or maybe I'm mistaken. I know the trestle portion had been funded, and that was just recently done. They don't have it over four oh five yet, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? And is that something that any any coalition of people along the trailer are looking to back at some point? Because that will be an integral connection if you actually do want to get up to Woodinville.
You're, I think you may be looking at a crystal ball, Councilmember McCurbin. On November tenth, there is a there's a rather large groundbreaking scheduled for another section of the trail. I believe it's going to be about two and a half miles from that. Sort of four oh five trestle area south. That's been done as part of the Renton Bellevue project, so. I don't think that knits everything all the way to the Ripley Way part of Renton, but close and. So it's it's a trail that continues to come together and make progress. There there's still some important gaps, but. Much of what had been a gap, say, four or five years ago, has been addressed.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or I think we've, okay, I'll ask one more, and then we may will. That'll be your last chance. And it wasn't really a question, but feedback. I just, if if it's great to hear that, and I had assumed as much. If it was backed by Senator Murray, it had a pretty good shot, but to hear that that request. Made it into the Senate Appropriations Bill, I haven't heard you correctly. And it's just a matter of actually getting across the finish line of reconciliation, which by my estimation is probably matter, we'll probably get another continuing resolution, but it seems to be more a matter of when. They finally do get it across the line, which is great news.
Yeah. It is, and we were a little saddened. We had worked really hard with Congressman Smith's office on getting some money for our. Rainier Avenue Corridor South improvements. And that was in the House's version of the big infrastructure bill. But there was such an ordeal to get the Senate version passed that I think that's kind of the one, and it doesn't have any of the. The member designated requests in it the way the House one did, so. We have called out on our agenda. We continue to look for opportunities at that Rainier Avenue South project as well.
Absolutely. We would tee up for the the next round of congressional directed spending in the next year.
Absolutely.
Fantastic. All right. Well, I I think we have officially exhausted our questions. I know I have. So we can continue to digest you. I don't know what's for dessert, but. Well, I'm sure we'll we'll look forward to having back the the finalized version for review at future meeting, but thank you for the presentation and. Thank you all. We will go ahead, and if there's nothing else, adjourn and reconvene as a full council at seven PM. Thanks.
Thank you all.